Live from the city building in Athens, Ohio. Your local source for live city meetings. TGC 15 presents Athens City Council.
Good evening. Welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, December 8th, 2008. This evening, City Council is going to meet in two committee meetings, Environment and Transportation, and then at 7:30, we will have a special session of City Council. Environmental Committee is headed by Chair Member Goslin.
Thank you. The first thing on my agenda tonight is Soil and Water Conservation District Contract and an appropriation for that contract. This is a group, we did this earlier this year, and we're doing it just a little bit earlier now, so that we have it in place on time. This is a group that's been around for more than 50 years. They help the city in terms of managing erosion and stormwater, a lot of education in the community, and this is just an annual renewal. And I'm happy to say that they're not asking for an increase in the amount of money as some other people are this year. Mr. Mayor, do you have any, anything you'd like to add on the Soil and Water Conservation District Contract?
No. Earlier, we had, earlier this year, we had a couple of training sessions, so we cycled our code officers through the program, so they knew what abilities there were for soil and water conservation, had to do some, I think another work session with erosion control. So they're useful in that sense, because they just, you know, they can be utilized by any member resident of the county or the city, and it's, I guess, previous with the earlier code officers, they were being utilized a lot more, which is why we kind of reprimed the new ones.
Okay, great. Yeah, I know that there was an all-day training they helped organize in sometime in August, I think, is one of the ones you're talking about, and I'm sure it was helpful to the city to have that. Does anyone on council have any particular questions on this contract? Okay, well, then I'll be bringing it forward for consideration. Second thing on the agenda is natural gas aggregation, and I won't say too much about this myself, since we have a specialist here tonight, and I've already introduced it to council. So this is basically an effort that I'm looking at where the city can act as a purchasing group to negotiate lower natural gas prices for citizens of Athens. And my understanding is it could save in the area of a couple hundred thousand or even more every year for the citizens of Athens off of their gas bills. Mr. Fred Holmes is here with us. Many of you know him. He's been involved in city government in Nelsonville for a number of years, and he's working with Volunteer Energy Services. It's a company that the city could choose to work with in this aggregation process. Would you like to just say a little bit about the process and your experience with it?
I've got some material to let you know.
Okay. Thank you for coming to talk with us tonight. It's good to have someone there to answer questions. Here, I can pass them over.
Let me just give you a brief background, history of my background. I've been in government for over 17, actually going on 18 years now, but I was in the appointed position for about 17. I'm currently on the Nelsonville City Council. I started with Volunteer Energy in September of 2006, and my position there is Director of Municipal Aggregation. So I work specifically with towns and villages, townships, counties, besides also working with businesses and chamber of commercees. I'm not going to go into real detail on this, it's a presentation, but I want to do hit the highlights and leave time for questions. Volunteer Energy is a full-service marketer servicing industries throughout the Midwest. We work in Michigan, Ohio, Pennsylvania, and New York. We work in Ohio and Michigan because natural gas is deregulated. We're headquartered in Columbus or in Pickerington. I work mainly out of my home or out of my car. We sell natural gas is what we do. We have no pipelines. We're a natural gas marketer. We're allowed to buy natural gas at a lower price and sell at a lower price, therefore saving residents' money. Historically, natural gas has been provided in this area by Columbia Gas. It is regulated by the Public Utility Commission of Ohio. In the past, customers have had no choice, and usually the utility is generally the highest cost alternative. When you get a bill from Columbia Gas, it's a combination of three bills. It's called the gas recovery cost, grocery receipts tax, and transportation. When you go with a private supplier, the grocery receipts tax goes away. It changes into sales tax. Municipalities are 100% exempt from paying sales tax. That's where we can save a lot of people money. But when, what happens when you go to a private supplier, they pull the transportation cost out. Now, people will look at that and say, well, they're charging me extra. No, it was just wrapped into the bill when you're under the utility. You pay exactly the same price for transportation, whether you're with Columbia Gas or whether you're with a private supplier. Volunteer role in Ohio's Choice Program. We provide firm natural gas supply. It's guaranteed. The customer now has a choice. The municipality negotiates the gas price in term for the resident. When we talk about natural gas aggregation, we have an opt-out program, which is what we prefer, and we have an opt-in. An opt-in program is where it's strictly voluntary. An opt-out program is where all the people that are not, all the customers that are, that have not chosen a private supplier would be under this program. Now, they do have the opportunity at the beginning and throughout to opt out of the program if they so choose. Usually, that's about 65% of the customers that have not chosen a private supplier. You still receive one bill from the utility, still receive a bill from Columbia Gas, but it'll be a lower price. Over on page five are examples of aggregation. We do the Ohio Groceries Association. In the municipalities, we're currently doing the city of Brooklyn, Alliance, Brewster, Navarre, Broadview Heights, Marion. I signed up the city of Galapolis, all their residential customers and their small businesses, and I just got word today that we're picking up the city of Mount Vernon. You know, so we're into the natural, into the aggregation program. The chamber program that we've set up has been Pickerington, Logan Hocking, Cambridge, Nelsonville, Baltimore, Athens, New Albany, and Jackson. Also over there, you'll see some of our commercial customers. We do all the corporate McDonald's, the Wendy's, Donato's Pizza. On page six is customer slot supply options. I don't want to get into that tonight, because before you can even consider this, natural gas has to go on the ballot. It has to be put on the ballot. The deadline for the May election is May 19th. I believe you do three readings here, three readings and sits for 30 days?
February 19th, I think you went.
February 19th. What did I say?
Uh, May.
May? Okay. February 19th, yeah. So in order to meet that February 19th deadline, we're almost there. What is municipal aggregation is when communities form an aggregate buying group on behalf of their citizens. This past election, we had four communities that approved it, which was Albany, Fredericktown, Pickerington, and Bridgeport. Some passed by 75%. I think Albany passed by 51%. But a pass is a pass. That's the way I look at it. Community reinvestment program over on page eight, and this is very, very important. I was hired for the company because of my experience in government. Normally, when we go through municipal aggregation, the municipality will go through a broker, called an energy broker. When they go through an energy broker, we're required to pay that energy broker so many cents per thousand cubic feet of gas that go through the program, and we pay that every year. If you don't go through a broker, if you go through our company directly, we pay that money back to the community, and we're doing it in the form of what we call matching grant funds. I'm sure you use CDGB, Issue Two, Transportation, 20 in Ohio. I know you do Issue Two. That money goes back to the community. The only requirement, it has to be spelled out in the contract. It has to spell out in the contract what, not the particular grant, but what it's going to be used for. And there are other issues that it could be used for, as long as our company and you agree to it. So now, you're saving your residents' money on their natural gas bill, but there's money coming back to the community. And I know we're the only utility that's doing that. Now, the community that I mentioned to you earlier, the only one that's participating in that is the city of Galapolis, because all the other communities went through an energy broker. Okay? The four communities that passed it, they're not going through an energy broker, they're going through our company, they'll also be entitled to that community reinvestment. You get it every year. We don't care what grant program you utilize it for. If you don't utilize it this year, you can accumulate it over a number of years. So it's a, it's a great opportunity. If you're taking money out of, if you're using that, and you're not having to take money out of your general fund for a matching grant, it leaves you more money in that area. Over on page nine is current municipalities, programs served and by population. I didn't include Mount Vernon, because we just found out about it today. Over on page 10, it talks about the commercial customer list. How to get started. It must be placed on the ballot in order for your residents to have an opportunity to vote on it. Now, here's the interesting thing. If you put it on the ballot and it passes, you are not obligated to go through with it. If you cannot negotiate a price that you're comfortable with, that you feel best represents your resident, you don't have to participate in it. But until you put it on the ballot and it passes, you cannot participate in the program. So what I'm telling all the communities is at least put it on the ballot and get it passed.
It gives us the option to negotiate for?
It puts you in the best negotiating position.
But we're not required to?
You're not required, no. If it passes and you can't come up with a deal that you're comfortable with, all you have to do is say no. After it is approved, after it's approved by the voters, there has to be two public hearings. The one red pamphlet that I handed out comes right off the PUCO website. You would think that those public hearings would come prior to it going on the ballot, but they actually come after. After it's passed on the ballot, the responsibility between the municipality and the company is to negotiate what is called a management plan. Management plan is where you decide on the price. It's usually a two-year contract, and that's when you have the two public hearings for the public to have their comment. And then application must be made to the PUCO to become a municipal aggregator. We help you with that. We fill out the paperwork, we submit it, we work with the council, and Galapolis, it wasn't a council, it was a commission. We worked with the commission, we worked all those details out. The two things that I handed out, one was a postcard, the other one was a flyer. Of the four communities, one we put on the back of the water bills, the more detailed one, because we work with the communities and trying to educate the community, educate the residents on what natural gas aggregation is. Three of the communities, or two of the communities, we just sent a postcard, and we can certainly develop, if neither one of those are appropriate, we can develop some other type of communication. I'd love to tell you that one worked better than the other one, but I don't really, I have no way of judging that. But we work with, I attended council meetings, I attended different groups and talked about it, tried to explain it to people. Like I said, all four of them passed, and we're very pleased with that. Over on page 13, I want to talk to you just a little bit. We've talked about the municipal aggregation program, and basically, in order to do that, it's got to be put on the ballot. We've talked about the community reinvestment program, where money comes back to the community. Commercial accounts, I don't know how many accounts you have for the city. I just recently, we've, I've personally signed up over 11 communities on their commercial accounts. Now, that does not have to go on the ballot and normally does not need council or commission approval. I just recently did a cost proposal for a community in southern Ohio that had 20 accounts. In order to do that, I need copies of their gas bills over the past 12 months. It was easier for me to go in, and they authorized me to go in and meet with the auditor and pull those bills up, and I could gather all the information, rather than take 20 accounts and make 12 copies, 12 times 20. Looking at that, comparing our rates over the past 12 months with the rates that they were paying, and they had three different companies. Some of their accounts were with Columbia Gas, some were with two other private companies. Doing that cost comparison, and I was able to send it back, we could save them over $12,000. But in order to do that, like I said, I don't know how many accounts you have. I'd be happy to do that, either if you want to produce the copies and send to me, or if you want to give me authorization to come in and take the information, I can do that. The other thing that we have found with municipalities, there was one municipality that I worked with who were paying sales tax. They had a private firm, they were paying $5,800 a year in sales tax. We have a branch of our company called V.E. Tax Consultants that can go back and get that sales tax back for you, which are a small fee. But whose fault was it? It was really nobody's fault. It's just one of those kind of things that gets kind of dropped, you know? Everyone said, you know, I've had people say, well, we're not supposed to be paying sales tax. Well, if you haven't filled out the proper paperwork, you're going to be paying sales tax if you were the private company. So we specialize, and that's an area that we specialize, especially with municipalities, with churches, with nonprofits. We take a look at that, whether or not you should be paying it and whether or not it can be recovered for you. I'm sorry, I just really re-screwed that. Is there anybody else?
Thank you. Yeah, and does anyone on council have questions?
Can we authorize them to look at our, how would we do that? To look at our bills as well as putting it on the ballot?
That, I assume that would be all administrative. I haven't, I hadn't, I hadn't known about that previously.
Have you decided?
I've just been looking at?
Well, maybe we can ask the law director if we have to do an ordinance or something to authorize them to go and look, to talk to the auditor. The auditor would be the one?
It's definitely something we should, we should look at.
Both?
Yeah, right. So we can use it for our city bills as well, perhaps.
Okay.
Chris?
One other question without taking a lot of time tonight. Just wanting to understand, when you mentioned the CDGB funds and the Title II funds that might be used, as I'm understanding, that could be used as a kind of match program? Is that how it works, so that we could get a potentially even lower rate?
Well, the, just about any grant program requires the municipality to come up with a local match. And what we're saying is that you can take and use the money we get back to you as your local match.
Oh, 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 got it.
So we'll get a small amount from every utility bill?
That would be savings that we could then in turn indicate as match that is needed on certain grants, correct?
Right. It would be up to the council to decide which grant, what to do.
Thank you. Okay, that clarifies it.
Mr. Mayor?
So a couple of things. One, when you say write into the contract for a match, you're saying specific different grants or just grants in general, or uses of grants?
We're just saying grants in general.
Okay. And normally, how long do you usually do the aggregation for? What's the timeline?
It's usually a two-year contract. At the end of the two years, we're required to send out to every resident in the program. An opt-out, we usually send a postcard. We've been averaging less than 1% of the people after two years who want to opt out of the program.
Okay. So in theory, this has to go on the ballot. People are an opt-out if they're aware of it, if they don't like it. Would it behoove us as a municipality to go and be part of the aggregate, or we do it separate if municipal buildings are included? You mean, is there a change in price of the volume?
Yeah, but it's not, I don't think it's going to be that great. I would recommend if there's a cost savings right now, that you, municipality, go ahead and sign up, and then when the aggregation goes in, we can transfer them over into that program so you can get credit for that.
Okay. I'm not aware of what our guest lists are. I know we have at least a half dozen accounts, at least, but I don't know what the, I know the pricing, so I'll have to check on that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. I was wondering if you would be able to elaborate a little bit more on the community reinvestment program aspect? Just was, because you mentioned that very many municipalities, or I just would want to clarify some of that, if you could?
We only started this after I came on board.
Okay.
Okay? So all the communities that are on that list prior to Galapolis were done prior to me coming. The community I just mentioned that we heard about today went through an energy broker.
That was Mount Vernon?
Yeah, didn't go through us directly, which is fine, you know? I mean, you know, we still gave them a good price and everything. But you have to understand what we would have given Mount Vernon, what we're having to give to the, to the broker. So what we're saying is that, I do all those, because of my experience in government, I, you know, I filled out grants and different things like that, so I mean, we help and walk a community through that whole process. But, and let's say that you didn't want to use that as, as a matching grant fund. I also mentioned in there, like a green-type project, or let's say you contributed to a downtown manager. You know, there's several things that we could, we could designate that, too. The only thing we have to do is we have to specify it in the contract. You know, what I, what I wouldn't want to do is just give it and it go in a general fund, just, when it goes in a general fund, it just gets lost, you know? But if you had another, if you had a beautification project, did you want to say, okay, we're going to designate these funds to support this beautification? As long as we met ahead of time, put that in the contract, so that we know where, what purpose it's going. I came up with the idea of the matching grant fund, because I thought that was safe, you know? I mean, every community has, has to come up with a local match for something.
Thank you. So really, in one sense, the savings is actually in the purchasing of the gas, but also, as you say, the term you used, a tax, it wasn't a receiver tax, it was a, what that section was. You're talking about various points?
Grocery seat tax?
Grocery seat tax, yeah. About 7%? Is that what it is?
I don't think it's quite that high. The sales tax.
Sales tax.
Yeah. So let me just give you an example in Galapolis, and I don't, this is just an example on the pricing. We did a guaranteed 10% savings on the Columbia, Columbia gas, gas recovery cost. All right? By the time you took away the grocery receipts and added the sales tax, it worked out to an actual 7% cost savings. Okay? I don't know that when this is passed and when we get time, when we sit down, I don't know if that guaranteed 10% savings option will be available. We have other, other pricing options, and some I think even do a little bit better. But, but in the, the Galapolis commissioners were very insistent that when we sent a letter out, that we put something in there that it's not actual 10%. Because when people, whatever they read first is what they're going to take back. And so we put a little thing in there that when you add the two together and they compensate, that it's going to work out to an actual, approximately an actual 7% cost savings.
Okay. Do most of the contracts you have fix the price for two years, or is it a sliding scale?
There are some communities that have fixed prices of all the options on that page. That would be my least, that I would recommend, the least one. When you have a fixed price, what you're doing is you're guaranteeing it won't go over a certain amount. What we're finding out is it usually doesn't even come close to that amount. One of the pricing that I feel very comfortable is called a variable market price, where it changes from month to month. And people have to understand that when you're coming, that's exactly the way Columbia gas does. Their price changes from month to month based on the market. And we feel very confident that we can save, I'm telling people anywhere from 5% to 15% on their annual gas bill, you know? And I think the market-based price is, like I say, I'm very comfortable with. I think it will actually do better than, than that guaranteed 10% cost savings. But again, we'll have to see what the market is, because of six months, everything can go paywire.
Okay. More likely I can get to 12, you want 12 months of gas bills, is that it? More likely I can pull that together. Okay. And I'll get it to you once I do. I have your email address.
Okay. Well, thank you. Did you have a question, Mr. Holmes?
Yeah, a couple of quick ones. Is volunteer energy a proprietary organization for profit?
Yes.
I've known nursing homes to do kind of the commercial version of what you're talking about here, and I've known them to lose some money on it. So while we keep saying savings, 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 there's a real opportunity for people to lose money in this. Is that correct?
Especially if you go with a fixed price. There's some, there's some communities around Columbus who, and they, for some reason, they have really gotten locked into the fixed price.
Well, for example, if, and if we'd use gasoline as, you know, something similar, when we were paying $4 a gallon and everybody was scared and thinking, boy, we'd better go ahead and lock it in here at $4 a gallon, because it's going to go to $200 a barrel, and we would have, on behalf of the citizens of Athens, done that, and now we may go down to $1 a gallon, you know, we could have a similar type scenario, so I?
Yeah. And that's the reason why, if you're asking my recommendation, the fixed price would be my least, of all the pricing options, it would be the one that I would, would be at my bottom. Also, what I have to tell you is the pricing options used to change every three months. Columbia gas used to be every three months, and now it's monthly. So when you go monthly, it gives it a much greater opportunity for, for the market to self-correct. But no, you're absolutely right. If you lock in, and I can, I can tell you, communities now that have locked in, I think, at $1.11, and they're thinking it's a good deal, I'm thinking that, I would be very upset about that, you know? But we, most, if, if anyone asked me my recommendation, matter of fact, I just had a Catholic school that wanted to lock in a price, and I said, I'm telling you, we've looked at the prices, we've looked at what the market's going to do. Locking in a fixed price, it's not a good idea.
Well, we would basically be playing the futures market of a commodity.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I don't want to do that on behalf of the citizens.
And that's, that's one of the options that we, like, we wouldn't go with probably. But after, the process of this, after we get this on the ballot, and citizens, if they approve it, they give us the power to negotiate a price. For instance, in Albany where they did it, no, Galapolis where they guaranteed it was at least 7% below Columbia. So we can, when we do the negotiations, we can arrange it so that it will either definitely be a certain percent lower, or it'll be set up in a system where we'll save money, but a unknown amount. But there is that, that small possibility. But I would, I would say probably, and I could, and the OCC is going to, Ohio Consumers Council is going to send someone down to do a public education for this before the primary. And I think if you would poll the communities that do this, they end up saving money. And I can, I can forward that question to the Ohio Consumers Council and see if 99 out of 100 communities save money, or 50 out of 100, or if it's anywhere in between.
And if I could just follow up on that. All the communities that we've signed up, we've only lost one community, and it wasn't because of pricing, it was because they got a new marketer, and he had a favored supplier. And that's the reason we lost that. But of all the communities that we've signed up, we've kept them. They've been very happy, very satisfied, and like I said, we're averaging less than 1% of people who want to opt out after a two-year period. So I mean, and I think that's one of the things that I'm very sensitive, as an elected official, to put yourself in a position to where you're going to cost the taxpayers more money than if they stayed with the utility is political suicide. And we're very, but on the other hand, you know, we, when we work with a community, you know, we're giving the best advice that we know how to give. And we've had some communities insist on a fixed price, and if they insist on it, we'll, you know, we'll give it to them, but all we can do is?
Can you tell me how volunteer earns its money, then?
How do we earn it?
You take a cut out of what?
On the deregulation, Columbia gas can make a profit on the transmission, on the distribution, but they can't make a profit on, on the actual gas, where we can. We can buy gas at a lower rate and sell it at a little higher, but still below Columbia. So a private company is allowed to make a profit where Columbia is not. Whatever they pay for the gas, that's what they have to in turn charge, charge the customer. We try to buy all our gas from Ohio, West Virginia, try to buy as local as possible. So that, that was the whole point of deregulation, is to afford an opportunity for, for companies and different things to save money. Let me get back to the nonprofits and the churches. Again, there's a situation where as soon as that grocery receipts tax goes away and it goes into sales tax, they say that, they don't, I mean, that's 100% tax exempt, you know, for, for a lot of nonprofits. And we're trying to capitalize on that and try to, we're trying to get every kind of cost savings we can for our customers. We're not sacrificing anything. We're not buying inferior gas. Gas is gas. It's the same, you know, it's not an inferior product at all, but.
Thank you.
And that's, that's an evaluation we'll make once, once the city actually goes through the process of negotiating price. We'll take a look at it. It'll, of course, be a publicly available process, or publicly, what do we open to the public, and we'll see if we think it will save us money or not. But we will have to make that judgment call after that's, after it's negotiated. But we will have to make that judgment call after it's negotiated. Is there anything else? I'm taking up too much time here, so I need to cut things off. Go ahead.
So really, what you're saying is no incentive for Columbia Gas to go shopping. Okay. The other question is, if there's a ballot that goes, you know, goes to the election, is, okay, scenario, I'm not fixed to fixed price, I'm not set on that, I'm just asking a question. But if we create a contract, or we don't create a contract, in theory, we've gotten the voters to say, yes, enter into a contract or lay a date. Should we have a sunset clause on that particular ballot issue, or does it just open us up to doing whatever after the, in other words, okay, put it on a ballot, vote is approved, we talk to you, we decide we can't reach an agreement. So I assume that it's still open to the next council or something.
But it does not obligate you to...
To enter into a contract.
It doesn't even obligate you to work with our company. All it does is allow you to negotiate with a private company. So you're not required by law to put it out there, you can negotiate these contracts. But if you didn't want to work with our company, or you want to work with them, or you didn't want to work with anybody, it just gives you the maximum flexibility, where now, you can't, you know, you don't have the option.
Okay. And I assume there's always going to be a certain amount of people who don't get informed, feel they should have opted out and didn't have the time, so they have to wait two years?
No, 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 not at all.
No, the way they have it is they have a certain time limit to opt out.
Well, normally they have 30 days, but even after that, they can still continue to opt out. If, for some reason, and we've had this happen, three months down the road, you know, they were sent, they were sent all the information, they just didn't bother to open it up, and all of a sudden they opened up and realized that they didn't want to be part of the program. We have no cancellation fees. Some companies do, charge, unless it's a fixed-price program. If it's a fixed-price program, then the rules change a little bit. But if it's any other, and they want to get out, there's no cost, no penalty, you know...
Just ask a question.
And so that comes to the question of, what if I opted out, the contract is for two years, we go two years or four years, then I decide I'd like to come back in, can you go back into the program?
Yes, with this, what we're not looking for is that January they're in, February they're out, March they're in, we don't want them coming in and out, you know, every other month. But, you know, if they decide to get out, and then six months later, or nine months later, they want to get back in, yeah, that should be no problem. And let me also just, because you kind of hit on the people who are not eligible for this, people who have already chosen a private supplier, the question comes up sometimes, can they participate? The answer to that is yes, once they fulfill their contractual obligation.
The other one.
Right. And you can do that either by waiting until the end of your term is up, your contract is up, and some companies have a cancellation fee. And if you just pay the cancellation fee, then you can get in. The important thing is, is that we're not permitted by law to go after those people. Because those people have already, that group of customers have already chosen a supplier. So when you put it on the ballot and you choose, the only names that we'll solicit, in theory, are the ones who are with Columbia Gas.
They're not allowed to market to people that already have a current supplier. I'm going to have to...
Okay, one more question. In terms of billing for municipalities, municipal buildings, you just want the price, or you want to see it, cubic feet of gas, or whatever, what do you want?
I need the front and back of the bill.
Front and back of the bill, okay. And if I authorize the project to give you that information, she'll give it to you, she'll have it from you?
Yeah, or I could just come and take a look at it, if that would be easier.
Okay. Is that possible to do? You need 12 months of the past gas bills for all different buildings?
Would it be easier for me just to come and look at it?
They're scattered all over the city. But we'll get there.
Can this be addressed at another meeting? Sorry, we have more business we need to get to shortly.
And we're already like...
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
Thank you.
And so I would like to get legislation together to put this on the ballot, if there's not serious opposition, I'm going to bring that forward in the national process, we have enough time to put through the normal readings and everything. So look for that coming up. And I am finished.
Next is Transportation Committee, and I have one agenda item tonight. You might recall that Mayor Wile let us know that some of the businesses on West Union Street may have made a request to City Council for free parking during the holiday season. So I've done a little bit of background work to give us some additional information, and thought that we could briefly discuss this tonight, and see what kind of decision we might be able to move forward with. In 1994, there was an ordinance passed, O-4394, and that authorized the City Safety Service Safety Director to suspend parking fees at metered spaces. And those were on Court Street, between Carpenter and President, and then two other cross streets, one of them being Union Street, between Congress Street and University Terrace, and then Washington Street, between College and Congress. And the businesses that sent a petition to the city are located on West Union Street, and there are eight businesses, Star of India, is it Rio Grande, or Rio Grande in this case, Rio Grande, Grinders, Cat's Den, Smiling Skull, Saloon, Cyclopath, the Union Street Cafe, and Athens Computers, Copiers, and more. And they would like the city to consider including them in the free holiday parking that benefits many other businesses. So I walked West Union Street a bunch of time today, just to take a look at the meters that are involved in that area. And if you visualize, starting at the lower part of West Union Street, in front of Star of India, on that north side of the street, there are about eight parking meters. On the south side of the street, there are approximately 13. Then the break from Station Street on up to High, there are approximately 20 meters, I lost count because people started talking to me, but about 20 meters on each side. So we're talking 21 in the lower section, 20 on each side in the upper section, we're talking about a potential of 60 meters. I did bring this up with a subgroup of the Transportation Advisory Committee when they met last week, to get some of their opinions on this. One possibility that was presented was the idea of maybe allowing for two or three bags, you know, the free meter, free parking to bag meters, and maybe three of them in front of each of the businesses, that that might be a compromise. So what I've, I just did some math, then. If revenues from parking meters are $5 a day, and we've got a total, if you went with every one of the meters in that area, it would be approximately 60 meters. So that would be about $300 a day. When I walked up at noon, it was slightly afternoon, it was closer to 1 o'clock this afternoon, maybe half the meters were open and not being used. So, you know, if you went with half of that, then that would be, say, $150 a day for the approximately 30-day parking period. So I thought I would bring it up for discussion, see what council members thought of the idea of either allowing that, one option would be the entire range from High Street on down to near Star of India, or perhaps a compromise of three meters, bag meters in front of each of the businesses, or we could say we weren't going to consider it at all. From a certain perspective, I, yeah, I'd like to get your input first.
Another compromise, all those businesses are on one side of the street, which I guess you, I don't know what that would be there, you know, what side of the street? Maybe it'd be, from your guesstimate, 20-some meters on that side of the street.
Maybe 20 to 30, yeah.
That might be an option.
Okay. Other comments from other council members? Councilmember Bowser?
Is this for this year? Because it seems to me we'd have to think about it and put it in for next year, in terms of timing? If council has to approve it?
My thought was they probably wanted it for this year, if they could.
Which would necessitate quick readings and...
Right.
Suspensions and emergency calls.
Really uneasy, too.
Yeah. It's hard to justify that as an emergency, but it could be council's will.
Right. And it doesn't stipulate, it just says that they would like them to be considered at a certain time. Councilmember Phillips?
It seems to me that Uptown is a little bit of a different case than other business districts, because they aren't required to have parking right there. It's a different zone, and, you know, if people are going to go to the Uptown businesses, and if they're driving, you know, they end up paying for parking. So I wonder if that's why traditionally that has been, you know, council has done that as a holiday thing for the Uptown area, because that's a zone where they don't have parking right at their premises.
So you're saying, I'm sorry, I'm not quite sure.
It seems different to me, and there are lots and lots of businesses all over the city. It seems like this could spread really rapidly if we start expanding it outside the zone, you know, that we've traditionally done this.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Butler?
Sure, thank you. Maybe for the sake of argument's sake, regarding what Member Phillips raised, some of those businesses do offer parking, but some of them do not. Is that what you were alluding to, that, because not all the businesses listed that were signed on the petition offer parking? I do see your argument about the slippery slope in making exception, but I guess, in how we define Uptown businesses, so do we define Uptown businesses as within walking distance of the courthouse, or do we define Uptown businesses as just those that are not on the floodplain? Because I sort of envision that Union Street area as still being a part of Uptown, although it's not the same, it's a different animal than East State Street.
Councilmember Stansfield?
I think I follow the option that the president of council opened, is that this would require suspension of the rules, which we usually reserve for financial issues dealing that the city is involved with, or real emergencies that need attention now. And I have to admit, even though I think I am in favor of some compromise to offer than the parking, I don't see that it is an emergency, that rates an emergency clause and suspension of the rules. And so I would say that maybe we would consider this after the first of the year to be included in our area that we consider in the future.
I'd like to second that.
Councilmember Coons, seeing general nodding of heads and saying yes, that what we'd like to do is, since it's not an emergency situation, to consider this for full discussion after the first of the year, and try and work out a compromise, and acknowledging Councilmember Phillips' comments, and Member Baines', that it might be setting a precedent that we need to take into consideration.
Okay. Just to kind of close the discussion, one thing I think you have to remember is we're still paying the attendants to walk, and somebody's going to have to pay that cost, because we can't furlough them, so there's, that's part of the slippery cost, slow cost as well, although no one's mentioned it.
Okay. Thanks, thank you for the comment, I appreciate that. Okay, Mayor Wile?
Same thing applies to 24-hour parking rule. We suspend that for break as well, if we still have somebody whose job is to go around chalking tires, which means they're not employed right now, or otherwise they're doing other things by noon.
Well, I hope somebody...
The subset you're talking about is basically all the meters, which is a certain, you know, radius from downtown. What we've suspended, of course, is the downtown area, within the area, approximate area of the parking garage. This is further down, so it would be a little bit out of that loop, but again, I think this is something that could be brought up for next Christmas, I guess.
Before next Christmas.
We'll bring it up well before next Christmas, or holiday season.
The other thing to do is to go down there and look at the, how many cars are parked there right now at this time, and see what we're talking about in terms of revenue that's being generated. I mean, I cruise down there regularly, east, west states, West Union, and it's not always filled up, but, you know, again, I don't average at all different times, maybe all different sets of eyes will see something different.
Right. So I would urge people, if they can take a drive down there and just take a note time of day, how many spaces vacant, that'll be a help for us for a discussion. Okay, thank you very much.
Onto our special session of City Council. It's considerably past 7:30 time. We do have a quorum with all members of council present. Ordinances for third reading, Ordinance 12508, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a LPA federal project agreement with the state of Ohio through the Director of Transportation for Rehabilitation of state routes 33 and 50, within the city of Athens, and declaring an emergency. Member Nysley?
Mr. President, I move for adoption of Ordinance 012508.
Second.
And this ordinance is to allow the state of Ohio to improve the bypass that is inside the city limits, and it will have some, involve some four-lane rehabilitation with concrete pavement, also joint repair on ramps, guardrail, drainage, and regrading work.
Very good. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 12508 is adopted. Onto ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 12808, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to extend the current contract to provide financial support for the operation of the Athens County Convention and Visitors Ordinance 12908, an ordinance amending the 2008 appropriation ordinance and authorizing an enter fund transfer.
I'd hate for you to get on a roll here.
I would, I'm for it.
Mr. President, first of all, I'd like to amend Ordinance 12908 to add...
I believe you mean 09, 12908, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, 12908, whatever I said. I'd like to amend it to add another section in Section 1, to appropriate $4,666.63 to the Cable Access Fund, to make the final contract payment to Athens Community Television, final contract payment for the year 2008. We don't have money appropriated for this payment, it would slide over into 2009 budget, we'd prefer to do it now. Second.
Motion and a second, is there further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment are stated.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 12908 has been amended and read for the first time.
And so, Mr. President, I would ask that we suspend the rules on Ordinance 12908.
Do you have a second?
Second.
This ordinance actually has two sections in it now that would benefit from suspension. The first one would be what we've just added to it, the final payment of 2008 to the Athens Community Television. This would, the total contract for the year that we have agreed to with community television is $56,000 in payment. And again, historically, this was paid quarterly, and the fourth quarter payment was paid out of the following year funds. With the new contract, it's been, with the new management, we're paying it monthly, and we would like to bring this last month payment into the current year, it makes more fiscal sense. Secondly, the Service Safety Director introduced our discussion about an appropriation of $10,500 to the street fund for certification and training, some of which has already occurred, some of which is ongoing, and we need to appropriate the money to pay for that.
Is there further discussion on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Opposed? Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of Ordinance 12908.
Second.
For the reasons that we've discussed.
Further discussion? All those in favor of adoption?
Aye.
Opposed? 12908 has been... 12908 has been adopted. Onto ordinances for first reading, ordinance 13008, an ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Athens, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 3109, introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. Member Sands?
I'm not sure.
And member Baines? Okay, member Sands.
Okay, Mr. President.
This is a biggie.
I'm going to do the next one.
Yeah, okay.
This is a biggie. This is our appropriations for the calendar year to come, and you have attached to your agenda a thumbnail sketch of that. Notice that the current budget of expenditures for the general fund is a little more than $11 million, $11,546,000 and change. The total expenditure for the year is $30,323,780. I'm sorry?
No.
Okay.
There's some talk to be done.
And the auditor might have something she'd like to say about this at this time. She has given us her best estimate of certified receipts for the year, and we're hoping, we not hoping, we are relatively certain that with the carryover from the general fund and the various department funds, that we will have the funds to cover this budget. And as we talk about the further parts of it, you'll see that the budget is a very, what I had called earlier, a status quo budget, there's very little growth involved.
One thing that we can thank the auditor for, and Ray Hazlitt and Kathy Hecht, is that we regularized and made reasonable and professional transfers from the proprietary funds into the general fund. And so both internal services and other administration are now more systematic, more regular, and certainly in the future may be changed, but we appreciate the effort and seized on it in a dime. We did, as you recall, not require the full transfer from recreation, and we're hoping that isn't something we do in the future, aren't we? And that was kind of a decision that was made because they, they're still in transition at this point. The other thing that I wanted to mention is we moved all of the people that were previously in other administration up to the mayor's office, and that's why that's changed. We haven't added people there. Other administration was kind of a flaccid little fund. Numbers would appear there. I remember $659,000 last year, and I went, where is that? And where's it from? Now it's, you know, I think it's much tighter than it was, thanks in no small measure to the mayor and also to the auditor's office.
Any questions about this, mayor? Any comments?
Well, I think my rendition I saw as of Friday, we were at $29 million. I assume the debt is the difference there in the sewer debt fund? Is that what I'm seeing the difference as?
Yes.
Okay. And that's to account for the bonds that have to be paid off?
We, right. Even if we don't pay off all our notes or roll them over, we have to appropriate the full amount owed, and that's $1,55,000.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just want to be sure what was going on. Okay, and I think the internal, other admin and internal services still will have to be tweaked a little bit, mostly because some of the, some of the, in other admin, some of the transaction class 200s and 300s were held back into other admin, and some of them got forwarded to the mayor's office. And I think earlier today, Deborah came down asking where my six cars were in the mayor's office, and...
We got that from the auditor's office. I thought I just prepared it on to Alahu and let him deal with it.
I was very surprised to find out everybody had a car.
I know there's a white and red one up there. Maybe two cars each.
I was the one that called Nancy last night saying, I just looked over this, and unless we have 150-some vehicles in the city, I don't know what is going on with this.
Okay. And I also get the impression we did, you took out a lot of the capital funds, so I assume we're going to have to put those back in during the year.
As we, as we've been more appropriate of.
And the other thing is that really it doesn't leave a lot of room for, I know where the budget is, it's tight and everything, but in terms of preventive maintenance, which has been discussed all this past year, it makes it a little bit difficult to figure out what we're going to do with that.
Preventive maintenance and planned maintenance of a lot of our infrastructure. You're exactly correct.
You can buy the pipe out of 200, 300, though.
Yeah, we will. I think the little discussion that member Baines and the mayor have been having back and forth right now, we will be monitoring this closely, and as projects arise, we will hopefully appropriate money to cover them.
If we're talking about the future, I'd like to see a vehicle list at some point that's up to date. So that's something to strive for. As you guys are talking about parking on West Union Street, I'll be looking for a vehicle list. Okay?
We are introducing this ordinance and two others dealing with the budget tonight. We will most likely have a special session later this week for second reading and have third reading at our regularly scheduled meeting next Monday. And at these upcoming times, you may hear, you may be aware, made aware of some tweaking as the mayor suggested, as it becomes necessary.
Sure. But I'd like you to note that the mayor's office doesn't, has a budget total right now of zero, and so we need, that is a typo apparently, or a missing link in the spreadsheet. The missing link, so we need to get that fixed by the next meeting.
I thought he could take the hint.
I can leave right now if you want.
Probably feels like leaving.
I'm sorry. I didn't notice that just now, too. I was looking at the old budget.
Thank you, member Phillips.
Debbie, I understand.
Any questions from councilmembers at this moment? Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Ordinance 13108, an ordinance authorizing staffing levels on non-union pay scale and slotting for the fiscal year ending December 3109. Repeal in all ordinances inconsistent therewith and declaring an emergency. Again, from the Finance and Personnel Committee. This is the mayor's Baines speaking.
Okay. Oh, 13108 is a typical ordinance that we pass every, every year at this time, usually. Notice we have the December 21 deadline here, so we'll be having a meeting next week, this week, midweek, and then the last one on Monday, next Monday. There are a couple of things that I thought maybe we should mention that are different from before. Pretty much steady state, but there are, there were people who were hired in 200s and 300s. So it's pretty much everything goes, and they were hired, and it was a holdover from the good old days when times were lush and so on and so forth. So basically, I, we've talked, I think, back and forth, and what we did was we put them in the budget as half-time people. And so we have, for example, on page two of this ordinance, of the supporting materials, we have those people who were added are in boldface, a half-time secretary in the fire department, a general secretary in code half-time, and parking enforcement attendant. I don't know, that would be, again, half-time. Those are already paid, they're in the budget, they just weren't in the staffing ordinance quite this way. And finally, there's a general secretary in sewer administration. And actually, in a moment, I'm going to ask to amend this and divide it between water and sewer administration. I don't know how the person was ended up being paid out of that, but pretty much with, these were already in the budget last year that we used, and maybe they will come or go in the future if we have to make cuts, but these have been paid. But now it's regularized, everybody's on the same playing field. What I heard from people in various times is if you're beginning secretary, general secretary, then you probably should be paid, they should all be the same from department to department. We shouldn't be having a variation there. And this is not of our doing, so I don't feel like I have to account for it. But let me just make one quick amendment to this ordinance. The general secretary in sewer administration, point five, I would like to amend it so that we would have half of the general secretary in sewer administration out of water administration, oh forty, point six three, so it'll be point two-five and point two-five in those two. And if I can have a second?
Second. Second?
Just to even it out, I don't know why it ended up in sewer.
Motion to amend ordinance 131 as stated. Is there further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment is stated.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been amended and, again, read for the first time.
Thank you. Okay, if you turn the page, we did shape up, as you will see in a moment, the terms that are there. Once again, you'll notice we have interns, the benefits, and the hourly rates stated. So it's across the board, of course, we wouldn't do it in police, for the police officers, that's a totally different matter. But 7:30, the minimum wage now coming on, into place, up to $8, and we do define intern, so you will all be ecstatic at that. We'll see it in a moment, I guess, because it's important to have that. Notice we moved, removed the intermittent category. It was, again, something from the past, and if we're going to tighten up, that's certainly a place we can tighten up. So if somebody's working for us temporarily, you can see the pay scale. It won't be in the old fund where they used to work, and it won't be at this amount of money, at the larger amount of money. It was across a lot of different things. We discussed this with the, with the service director, I hope she discussed it with the mayor. Yes.
A couple of things. What's the difference between an intern and an aide? Is there a definition of an aide in there?
We will find, I'll see if I can find it in here when we get to the next ordinance. An intern is typically a college student, isn't it?
Typically.
Typically. Well, there are some that aren't, but typically.
Okay, and so because they're classified as general secretary, they are, they're basically going to be in the pay increases step grades, right?
Every two years, yes.
Every two years, they'll get vacation time or holiday time.
Holiday time, yes.
Okay. And they're technically civil servants?
They're, if they're in the ordinance, yes.
Do they have to be, apply as civil servants?
I don't know. That would be a determination that you can make.
Just wondering.
I mean, we have people who have worked for us for two years that have no regular relationship with us, that are on the payroll. This is an effort to try and...
Are you talking about consultants or...
I think so, yes. Or professional contracts.
Consultants in council or elsewhere?
What?
Consultants in council?
No, no, I'm talking about the four that we have here, the three.
Okay.
And you're familiar with that problem, I think. I don't know if it's a problem or not, but...
Okay, and I'm aware of actually, this is the third rendition of the staffing ordinance this year.
Uh huh.
Okay. One of the other things about amending it, sometime in the future, we may have to amend a certain amount of time of my assistant, executive assistants, is actually taking up doing grant writing. I've been told that there is administration fees that go with some of the grant writing, and they should be documented either via ordinances like this or some other method.
Or job descriptions?
Job descriptions one way, but actually turns a billable time, I think, from hearing from Ray.
So the money is just sitting there, or we use it for, I mean, okay, we used to do it with Katrina Troy in transit, so I didn't know we weren't doing it.
We think it's still sitting in the grant funds and not being moved into the general fund.
Whoa, get it quick.
But wait a second, we have to document one and how it's been done before we do something like that. We just can't say, yes.
No, I mean, I said we've done it before in previous administrations, so once we get the pattern going, tell us what you want.
Okay.
That would not be tough at all, as far as I can tell. Okay, the other thing is I, the parking enforcement person, you kind of let go with this. We have a parking enforcement person, I would assume that there's something that you would do with that person, right? You know, in terms of, in terms of assigning duties, other duties as assigned?
I guess so.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I just wondered what, you dropped it out there, and I hadn't thought about it when I voted on that other thing, so I was wondering what was going on for the 24-hour person.
They may be polishing the truck.
Oh, okay. Well, that's good. And council aides? We trifled with that a little bit, the intern thing, I'll read you in a moment, but for the government channel, Debbie, define an aide, please, for me. I don't think it's in there. We were trying to deal with 50 hours. Yeah, you asked her the same thing?
They're legislative.
They're legislative, yes. It's legislative privilege, that's all it is.
Oh, is it?
We don't have, it's not defined.
We don't have to define it.
You had to ask, couldn't you, Baines?
Well, I know, but everybody's, everybody's, the numbers will be controlled by, again, the amount of money in the budget.
Right.
And the other thing is...
And that's more than what we've done on the...
And that's, and that's more than what, and it's not as needed, it's by the amount of money in the budget. And the other thing is cool cities, gas aggregation, anything that is a temporary, a lane gets type of program, I'm all for. So tell us what you want.
How long has she been working? A year and a half now? She come in about two, you put in staffing?
And so what I would say is, these are the goal firsts. You can add to those. Tell us what you want. GIS, that would be a good one, potentially. I was trying to talk your planner into, our planner into that the other day.
Further comments on ordinance 131? Ordinance 13208, an ordinance adopting a fringe benefits package for non-union personnel within the city of Athens and replacing all ordinances inconsistent therewith. Again, the Finance and Personnel Committee. Member Sands, your turn.
Actually, Mr. President, member Baines talked about this very ordinance a week ago, went over the various portions of it, and she and the mayor were just talking about some of the definitions of people within it, so...
He's passing the buck to me, I hope, yes?
Excuse me?
You just pass the buck to me, that's fine, I'll take it from here.
Okay, fine.
Yeah, okay, fine.
And then, member Baines?
I'll be happy to.
Page number nine, I believe that is where we start with medical insurance, and as you know, we had this, we've had a change in that medical insurance. Talks about who's eligible and who's not. We cast out the intermittent employees because it's not a definition we have anymore. Talks about eligibility, nothing's changed, but here's an important, bold-faced item for us. The city will provide a prescription drug plan. Specific details are outlined in the employee health benefit plan. Then if you go on to page 10, notice we've cast out a lot of detail, and we've added, effective January 1, 2009, United Healthcare Preferred Provider Network Option will become available to all employees. Benefits, deductibles, and copays are stated in the plan document prepared by United Health. A summary plan booklet will be provided to each employee. Once we give them that to our employees, we've met our requirements. I mean, one of the things we're supposed to have is an annual booklet up to date, and that's something that is in here, but this will, and it's on its way. We have changed the definition, it's called the Buy-A Plan and the Basic Plan, and since none of us are covered by it, I won't go over it. And then after that, many of these other things were items that we talked about. If you page on to, it's over here, after the clothing allowance, let's see, page 21. You can see part-time seasonal personnel, seasonal's generally the recreation department and also the law enforcement area, working less than 40 hours per week on an annualized basis, talks about part-time and seasonal, pay range placement on page 21. And then on page 22, this should make Debbie happy, interns are part-time employees always, we should define everything, she's absolutely right, who are typically college students, they generally will work about 20 hours per week, except during the summer months, winter breaks. During those breaks, he may work up to 40 hours per week. Depending on what's in the budget, I guess. Seasonal employees, again, you have that item in there, and I think that's about it. Was that, then it was interactive.
I'd just comment again on, you commented on the health, the change in the health plan. Just again, this, this new health plan is, for the first time, offering preventive medicine to our employees, paying 100% of doctor visits, doctor's office visits. to our employees, paying 100% of doctor visits, doctor's office visits, and 100% of many of the procedures that might be ordered by a doctor for the first time. Families, or people who have family memberships, it's that Well Baby program that we've talked about is included in here. So, we're excited about the possibilities for this new program.
You know, I would note that we probably have spent eight to 10 years talking about Well Baby program. I think it's very important for every young child to have that kind of care, and we weren't covering it before, and I don't think our costs will be as high as they were under the old program, so I do appreciate the move to United Health, and I think it'll be a benefit to our employees, both in preventive and in Well Baby Care.
Further discussion on ordinance 132. Ordinance 13308, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Soil and Water Conservation District. Member Gosling.
Thank you. This was discussed in committee earlier. This is just a yearly renewal that we do every year with the Soil and Water Conservation District in Athens. It will authorize the mayor to enter into a memo of understanding with them, and appropriation of $12,000 out of a line in the general fund for that contract. Do you have any questions?
Further discussion? The next item on our agenda is an executive session to discuss personnel and collective bargaining. To move into an executive session takes a motion, a second, and a roll call. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I can, so to include...
To include the mayor and the auditor? Is there anyone else? Oh, and of course, the law director. Okay. Member Butler.
Aye.
Member Coon.
Aye.
Baines?
Aye.
Sands?
Aye.
Gosling?
Aye.
Miss Keen?
You okay?
We'll give about five, 10 minutes for any member of the press who wishes to speak to a member of council, and after that, we'll ask you to leave so that we can go into our executive session. Thank you.